I can bring a meeting to orders. Welcome, everybody. We will start with the public comment. I know we have at least one.
Chairman members of the board for the record, my name is Ted Ganzis. I reside in Manchester, New Hampshire. I'm the newly elected executive councilor that represents this district. And as I told you last time when I was here, if I was fortunate enough to be elected, I'd be back to give you my card so that you could call me if you had any questions or any problems, so I could help you out. In fact, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Sure, we will have the future.
Yeah? I'll reserve them for another time.
You're looking high.
It sounds like there's a lot of questions.
Well, it's really worth a comment. Just some generalized comment about, you know, estate restoring funding to municipality.
I couldn't agree more. Seeing what my position in the past was here in Manchester, there was a lot of funding that was taken out and downshifted to work.
Is that in the back room?
It's in the front room.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. Congratulations. Okay, anybody else? We're going to move on into the budget hearings. I've had a request from the road manager to bring him up early so he could get home since he's been plowing and keeping some hours and might be plowing again tonight. Who knows? So, we'll start with the highway department budget. It's on page six of the handout. If you picked up one on the way in. We're hoping for discussion. Any questions, any comments, any conversation?
Does he have anything else to talk to us about?
No. Anything make comment? Steve?
I don't really have any additional comments to add to it. The increase for paving is we're paving more roads this year. It was on.
You speak up a little bit.
It was on a schedule that Randy had made for every 10 years things get done. So this year with the road widths and square footage, and he had paved and miles to keep up, that's why the increase was there for paving. And then the salt is increased because we keep adding more developments in roads that we were not previously doing, like Daniel's Drive is getting added, and we should be plowing it when this budget comes in. Plus, salt's up and down year to year. Some years it's $10, $12 more a ton, other years it's $10, $12 less a ton. I don't know what it's going to be next year. So the increase in road miles and stuff like that, which is why we increased it.
Okay. All right.
There's a question.
Yes?
Not to put you on the spot, but if the paving budget were to get cut, do you know which road or roads would not get moved?
We've been talking about that, and I don't know yet. I can tell you that Snell Road would not be taken off the list because that road needs to be done. The problem is, is the way that they're done, like Snell Road is on the list. It's one that needs to get done. A lot of the other roads on the list are within a certain distance from it. That way you don't have to pay for another mobilization fee from the contractor.
Well, I assume one of the criteria would be, what is the oldest road relative to when was the last time it was paved?
So there are roads that have been paved a lot longer ago than Snell Road, but Snell Road's in far worse shape than any of those other roads. There are some that are like eight years. I think Snell Road's at eight years, and then there's other ones on the list for this coming in that are at 12. Depends on traffic volume and weight. Snell Road gets a lot more traffic than Old Concord Road or Joe Ford Road type things. But Joe Ford's on the same list as as well as Concord Road because they're right there.
Okay. Comments on the board?
Can I preference this by, I've gone through this budget because we're looking at a significant increase over 5%. And for me, that's too much. So I've gone down through it. You're first.
That's fine.
Personally, there's one, two, three, four, five things I'd like to reduce. So I know if you want to just go through each one of them?
Yes, please.
Um, police details, I'd like to reduce that by $2,000.
I'm sorry, which one?
Police details.
Give us a line or someone.
Oh.
Can I make a comment on that? I mean, it's not gonna, if I have to do tree removal on Snell Road, and I have to flag that road, I don't have the manpower to be able to close the lane and do that road properly without a police detail, without risking somebody getting seriously injured or run over.
Well, let's least leave you $1,000 in that line, I don't know.
Okay.
And these aren't easy because...
No, 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 I understand. I just, that's, that's like, one, if I don't do that roadwork job, I may not spend it. But if I do have to do it for some reason, then I could be in trouble.
Good comment. Medical drug testing, which is like four down from that, I'd like to reduce that one by 250. The one right below it, parks and grounds maintenance, I'd like to reduce that one by 3,000.
By how much?
Next one is probably six, seven down higher. Rented and hired equipment, $2,000 off that one. And fifth from the bottom, paving and asphalt products, I'd reduce that by 10,000.
So you want to go down to 200?
200, exactly.
Talk to me about parks again.
Uh, where about parks and groundings? Just based on what's been spent so far. I use the thing the town administrator gave us in terms of what's been spent this year and what was spent last year. Last year, they spent a little over $600. So I'm not taking the whole thing, but just based on where we are in terms of the totals, we're, I'm suggesting, yes, just me, that we make some significant cuts. And that's not the whole budget.
No, well, the parks one, I can't speak to anything on that. I wasn't here. I can tell you that I will spend more out of that this year because the parks budget, I intend on taking all the gas that they've spent. So like, all the money that they've spent going and mowing it and all that stuff, and then the maintenance on the blades and the lawnmowers has just been coming out of the regular gas budget and the other budget. I was going to charge that toward that specific thing.
Okay.
But I don't foresee it being...
Well, it still leaves you $4,000.
No, I saw, I mean, I don't foresee it being that much.
Steve, what comes under rented and hired equipment? Is that mainly the snow removal?
No, it's tree trucks. So like, if I want to have a tree company come in and do it, and cut a tree down, that's on it, and those guys are $1,500 a day.
Seventeen, two fifty.
If I wanted to have someone come in and help plow snow for a big storm, a rented truck, that'll go under it. Ricky's excavator used to go under it, but I don't have him anymore for the cheap price to do pipes. So that one may end up being an issue because if I have to do three pipes...
I see that it was, that we're keeping it at 16,000, which is what was last year also. I mean, it's easier to go in and go say, well, let's cut 10,000 or 5,000 or 4,000, but...
I looked at what was spent in previous years and then what's spent so far this year, so.
The only thing to say about that is they had Ricky for all the previous years, and we're not going to get that discount for a machine to dig a hole like we were.
Understand. Okay, John, anything?
The drug testing one, I, that's all completely random. If they call us, if the insurance company calls us, you know, that's 100% random. I can't, that could be high or it could be low one year. Then if the asphalt budget gets cut, it'll just be, because there's extra money in it to do some stuff at the transfer station and stuff like that, so I may not have to cut roads.
Okay.
I may not, but like you said, I don't know what hot top prices are going to be. I may have to cut roads before, depending on what the hot top prices were, so.
Okay. Any other comments you have?
No.
Board? Okay. All right, thank you very much. Town administrator, this is the first account, this is on page one, for a budget of 132,447.
No, it's a hundred...
Is that right?
No.
143,849, sorry.
The column to the right, because we knew it ahead of time, we just dropped in the adjusted wages.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, my mistake.
We were trying to get ahead of that.
Ahead of the curve?
Ahead of the curve.
Understand. Changes for me.
I'd like to reduce temporary employee wages by 1,500 to 2,000. Let me find, third one down.
So, I'm sorry, can you just let me know what you would drop it to?
Oh, I said, I would like to drop it by 1,500 to 2,000.
Oh, I thought you meant...
Do you want me to drop it by 2,000?
No, 1,500 to 2,000, which would have been a different number. All right, thank you.
I just, just so the board knows, I went through all these, and if you do all my changes, it will reduce the tax rate increase to 2.96% without anything bond wise. So just to give you an idea of where I am, I was shooting for three. I think that's...
Pretty corny of us.
Are you distributing the painting?
Well, not necessarily equally, but just going through what's been spent previously, what's been spent so far, and in terms of knowledge. So, suggestions?
At what point can the public speak?
I'm sorry?
At what point can the public speak?
You can make comment right now.
Thank you. I need to back up to the previous item.
Meaning the highway budget?
The highway budget. And I just want to comment on two things, well, three actually. Paul Gazowski, 46, Langford Lane. Number one is that the times that I've been on the road recently, and tree trimming has been happening by either our people or subcontractor people, my observation is that there isn't enough of a detail, and there is an imminent hazard. So we have employees of subcontractors and our employees flagging. We have one police detail, so I have to be very extra careful with that. So I just want to point that out to you. The second comment is, is a question actually for Scott or any of you. That parks and recreation, whatever that item was...
Grounds maintenance.
That 639 figure from last year expenditures, why is that so low? I've always been curious as to how the mowing is funded. And Randy was a gift, so, and we have a new person, and that new person needs support. So how, why is that figure so low? Was money shifted around? Was some other mechanism used to fund the mowing last year? And I guess that's my first question. Why is that figure so low? Why is the actual so low?
Well, the gentleman that could answer your question just left. But as far as my understanding is, the fuel was coming out of a different line item, and also that covers grounds maintenance around his facility and other places. So all the time, hourly labor is out of Randy's salary budget in terms of salary or full-time wages. So I'm not sure what makes up that 630. I don't know off the top of my head.
I also believe that at the time the fiscal '18 budget was put together and approved, we had outside contractors doing the maintenance. And so that would have been an increased additional cost.
Okay, before, before our new road agent takes a hit on that line, maybe we could get a more detailed explanation as to whether he's adequately covered, especially in a transition. He needs, he needs support, and so maybe you can clarify that particular thing. I think that's it for now, those two observations. And just a general observation is that Randy was indeed a very special person and did things out of his own pocket, I fear sometimes, and out of goodwill, and we shouldn't expect that to continue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Paul's good comment. Where did we leave Paul?
Election and registration.
Okay, elections and registration now. Really not much change. Scott? I'll let you know. Okay. I know, that's why I asked you.
You're good.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay, we'll move down. Through, let's see, we're going to elect, okay, town clerk, tax collector, town clerk.
I have, and I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but I have two questions and one suggestive reduction. Mileage, we keep budgeting $1,000, but she doesn't spend all of it. So I'd like to have some information from her in terms of why does she continue to ask for 1,000 when she doesn't spend it?
Okay.
That was my first thing. And in terms of postage, postage is going up, and she keeps budgeting 5,000. So I'm not sure if he's going to be sending out listings. So this is a kind of aberration in my thing. I think that should be a little bit higher, but maybe she can give us some more clarification. Last one is office supplies. I'd like to reduce that by $600.
I'm sorry, which one, Scott?
The last one, office supplies.
Office supplies. What was the aberration there at 18? Was what, $3,129?
Which one?
The office supplies.
Yes, she says more, but so far she's not spent too too much. So that, it's a question, but...
Finance administration?
Same, same question here in terms of postage. It's the same as it was last year, postage went up, so that's more of a question. And, yeah. And also the same thing here with office supplies. I don't know if we can reduce that just a little bit.
Well, excuse me just for a minute, but that's postage and IT, is it not?
No, it's just postage.
Or is it just postage?
I don't know really why the...
I think it's just postage.
Yeah, it's a more...
Sorry, are you suggesting a number that office supplies goes down to, or?
Nope.
Just a general comment?
I'm just asking the question in terms of, is there, do we have a little bit of wiggle going now?
And what is the, what is the, for the TA, what is the travel for 1,600? Generally speaking, where is that?
It's for travel to conferences, for travel to training. Typically, it's a mileage. It typically ends up being to Concord, although if there's a conference, if there's any costs to the conference. So in other words, the NHMA, there's a cost.
Registration costs and so on. Computer services are up by, well, 18 was 55. The actuals were 33. That's, so we're not staying with 55?
I would cut that one.
That was, the increase was in there, as you may recall, if we wanted to move ahead with the digitizing, but honestly, that's a want, not a need.
Yeah, that could be reduced. Well, can we reduce that too?
That's a very good question.
So can you...
How much, I'm sorry? Would you recommend?
Honestly, I have a spreadsheet somewhere that will tell me exactly what I...
What the digitizing amount was? I mean, at the very least, if we're not going to, we should take that out, right?
I'll get that for you by the next meeting.
Okay. Assessing?
Oh, I'm not done.
Oh, you're not done, sorry.
I'm not done, sorry. Copier, printer, fax agreements? Is that, is there any movement on that 2,500?
So, as you may recall, I don't even remember when this was now, a year ago? Could have been two. We ended up purchasing the photocopier that we have at town hall, so we no longer have lease payments, but we do now have a maintenance agreement. So we pay a certain fairly low amount every month, but then every quarter they do an analysis and we pay usage. So it's just a little hard to know if we're going to have any especially additional printing costs.
So that one is kind of tight.
Yeah.
Okay. Last two, training. Can we reduce that by 1,000 to 1,000?
Sure.
And what about new equipment? Where is that going?
I'd like to reduce that by 2,000 to 6.
The computer hardware? Okay.
Yeah.
I think most of the cost in there was for a server, but if we end up needing a new server, then we just will upgrade desktops.
Comments? Assessing, anything? Seems to be pretty steady.
Pretty steady.
Legal expense.
I don't like it, but I don't have any...
It's certainly not going to go down.
No.
At least I didn't see any way it was going to go down.
Please up a little.
I'd like us to consider, right now, there's an extra family plan in there. I'd like to just consider taking that out. It's about $22,500.
You mean the buffer family plan?
The buffer family plan, yeah.
I'm going to bring some information back to the board on this for the next meeting. I'm seeing some potential shifting in the who's taking what for health insurance coverage. So, but I'll get that back to the board in the meeting.
Anything else?
None on that line.
Planning and zoning?
Yeah. I'd like to propose outside consulting, which is the sixth thing down, reduction of $300 to $600.
Go to 600, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm proposing.
Yep.
Equipment lease, which was another, what, four down?
Yep.
Reduction of $200 to 3,000. And the one running beneath that, proposing a reduction of 5,300 to zero. Last one is, once again, is postage. I'm just questioning, she keeps asking for $1,700, and postage rates are going up. So I know she sends stuff out, so I guess that's another clarification in terms of
Is there training different than the training under, I mean, I know we share some of the same classes as our...
It would be specific to training for the...
Planning and zoning, okay.
Building inspection.
Yeah. Probably should read up on, you have a question in the back or a comment?
Paul Gazowski, 46, Langford Lane. I think I heard this right, regional planning commission from $5,300 to zero. Can you explain that, please?
According to Ms. Rossi, we don't get our money's worth, and when we go to things, for things from the commission, we have to pay for them. So in her view, her suggestion is for us to cut.
Okay. May I suggest that you consult the chairs from the other commissions in town?
Yes, they don't.
Ag and conservation?
They don't.
And get their opinion on it, please?
We're looking at, or I'm looking at now government building, maintenance and repair. Obviously, the 20,000 will catch your eye. We were at, let's see, we spent actuals for '18 to '17.
I would say that things, I don't want to use the word falling apart, but if you look at what we spent in '17 and then what we spent in '18, they're increasing, and I don't know, maybe the chiefs are not along to this, but more things are needing repair. It's, I won't say it's only this building, but it's primarily this building that's causing me to want that budget to be higher, so.
I'm on the opposite side. I would reduce that by $2,000 to '18.
Reduce it by 2,000?
Likewise, the, oh, sorry.
I'm in agreement with Scott.
The one right above it, landscaping, I wrote, reduce that by 250 to 250?
For landscaping?
Yeah, right above it. The other ones, in terms of supplies, reduce that by 1,000 to 4,000. One running beneath it, energy committee supplies, reduce it from 1,500 to 500. Sustainability, reduce that by 500 to 500?
Which one?
Sustainability. Also, in terms of electricity at the tennis court, we budget $400 a year. Can we shut off the lights? It's not being used, used, so...
No, I'll look into this. I know that there's been a reason in the past why we don't want to just...
That's fine.
I think because there's an outlet there that's used twice a year, perhaps?
$1,500, I can get rid of the outlet.
Okay.
So, I'm at that point.
I think one of the uses is the Memorial Day services.
That's right, they plug in or amplify.
I'm just, that's what it's for.
For $400, I think the BFW will raise their voices to the...
That's the tennis court next to the school?
Yes.
So zero?
I'm, I question it.
Okay.
I'm not suggesting reducing it. I'm just, for $400, if we're keeping it for that particular purpose, I'm past that. That's a little bit too rich for me.
Well, I don't, I don't argue with that, but I don't, I don't think we should zero it. That's... That's, I assume that that's the outlet we use for the memorial place.
Yes, almost all of it is a meter charge every month. Even if you use it or not, it's a meter charge.
Yeah.
So. Go ahead. In terms of heat for the town hall complex, they're from the bottom, I'll reduce that by a thousand to five thousand. And this is based on what we spent previous years and then so far this year. Oh, I did have another one, I'm sorry. Uniforms, which is seventh from the top, I believe. Expenses are running higher than the budget. Can we take a look and see maybe we need a little bit more, or?
Yes, although I think we're okay.
All right. That was a question I didn't have any.
Just a comment, you know, safety complex heat. It's not too bad, five hundred dollars.
It's not.
That budget pays the propane bill for the heater that heats up here.
That's it.
I was going to say, could breathe.
That's not the whole bill.
Thank you.
We'll spend that in a week or so.
Paul Gazowski, forty-six, Langford, Atlanta. I would be entirely remiss if I didn't comment on the sustainability committee being cut to five hundred dollars. If you look at our actual right now, it's going to show we expended twelve dollars, but we just wanted to expend five hundred more to help support the backyard farming initiative, which is what we did last year. So, we're over expended beyond that five hundred that we look to getting. We're a relatively new committee, and as we get our feet underneath us and gain our stride, chances are, we're going to need to have more to expend, otherwise, we'll be coming to you for assistance in other ways. And having said that, I'll speak, nobody from the energy committees here, I'll speak to their good work, too. I think five hundred dollars is too steep. I'm looking at LED lights that they had an awful lot to do with, thank you.
We have cemetery yet?
Cemetery.
So, we actually may need to increase that. You may recall that the cemetery trustees talked about paying whomever the next custodian is going to be fifteen hundred dollars. So, we probably need to up that to fifteen hundred.
Is that the first line you're talking about?
The first line, yep.
Two fifteen or increase by fifteen?
Oh, two fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Total fifteen hundred.
Is that the second, is that the same thing, or is it a different?
No, same thing.
John?
Yep.
Insurance, I think we don't have to worry about that unless there's some movement we can make somewhere. Police department.
Fair, I'll come on just in case.
That was all I'm going, preparing yourself. Comment?
Well, he's up there because he and I have already spoken.
You want to listen to him first? I thought maybe you'd like to go first.
Oh, no, he's up there because he and I have already spoken, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I think. I'm putting words into his mouth possibly. I would like to propose that the new additional officer be removed with the benefits associated with that, which is, I think it's an executive line, I'm not sure. Also, I would like to propose officer overtime, which is four down, five down, a reduction of five thousand, which would bring it to thirty-nine nine oh six. I would like to also propose community outreach, get cut to zero.
What, cut to zero?
Community outreach.
Twenty-five hundred.
Two down, excuse me, yes, three down from that, or two down. Telephone cell phones, reduce it by five hundred to fifty-seven hundred. And then training, which is six from the bottom, a reduction of five, excuse me, a thousand to sixty-nine, sixty-five hundred. And then, I have three questions, the three right above it, which is dues, printing, and lease agreements and contracts. So, I don't know if the chief wants to address any of those.
Try it.
So, in terms of lease agreements and contracts, that's up. And I think if we can, I don't know if we can have any wiggle room in that. And also, in terms of printing and dues, dues seem to be, we don't spend the five hundred, so.
The dues is fine, I don't, that's been in there. I don't go to any IACP conferences or go to that anymore, so that's fine. The printing, you know, the busier we get, the more we print. And the lease agreements and contracts, again, that's the same thing. That encompasses all of our computer systems, the, our work system, so that is never changing.
Those are more questions. In terms of training, the thousand off that?
Concerns me. Training is the most important thing that we have.
Well, it goes back to what you spend, what you get budgeted and what you actually spend, so.
Correct, and if you look back, it's, you know, are we full staff? Are we not full staff? How many people will be sending the training? We do continue to try to do training here as much as we can, but there are a couple of trainings that I plan on sending the sergeant to that are away games. So, you've got meals and things like that.
So, could you maybe provide me, if not the whole board, hopefully the whole board, in terms of what encompasses that seventy-five hundred dollars for this upcoming year?
Yeah, it's any training that we do away from here that is not, that we can't do for free. So, that would cover the mileage, the meals, hotel rooms if needed. Anytime you send anybody to a decent training, for instance, the sergeant, any first-line supervisor or advanced supervisor classes. Roger Williams is at University in Rhode Island, is top-notch, and, you know, you can't get a class down there for six fifty, seven hundred fifty dollars just for the class. I love lodging and meals and everything, so. I mean, I'll live with the thousand dollars down, I'll work around it, I just don't.
It's just a proposal?
Yep, no, no.
Just a proposal?
I want to jump in for a minute. Number one, I know, because I've talked to the chief about the training situation, within the past ninety, maybe a hundred and twenty days, there were three officers that were killed doing pursuits. And I asked the chief to look into training, doing some pursuit training, which he has done, and we're looking at doing it right at the speedway.
Okay.
Very important. And the same thing is true for some of our tactical training, like we did at Massway School. Also, very significant. And we need to do more with the other towns relative to training, so we'd all know that we're going off of the same playbook when we're in a situation like that. So, you know, I just want to say the training, training right now in today's environment is critical to where we are. This is, this is not Mayberry RFD. We have serious issues and we need to train for it.
So, I'm going to echo Scott a little bit on the training issue with respect to the chair. Can you come up with a list of potential training programs that you've got planned up for the next year?
I can. Early on in the year, I don't know, you know, in March, they may come up with the training. Granite State Police Training, they do a lot of classes as well. We set our officers through a lot of those. I've got one go to a field training class there. So, March, they could put their schedule out and say, hey, in June, we're giving this class, and if somebody wants to send three officers to it, three hundred and sixty-five dollars apiece. So, I could tell you what I plan on sending them to, but in March, I could change if a class comes up that I think is pertinent, that they need, or the department would benefit from.
Or at least ones that you think you might be going for sure, but look in the past couple of years of what you have.
Yep.
And kind of combine them.
Okay.
I guess I'll give more flavor to the board as well.
And this, the training?
Okay. And nothing stops you, let's say we reduce it by a thousand sixty-five hundred, and you spent that doing other stuff, and if something comes up, you can always come back to us and say, hey, this opportunity has presented itself, because we have contingency money that we can, that we can move things around. So, don't, don't think, just, this is all you're getting and that's it.
Right.
If you find an opportunity, and I'm with Mr. Brown, you know, training is good, and when things get tight, usually, train's one of the first thing. And I didn't completely get rid of it.
Right.
But I think if there's an opportunity, just come to us and say, hey, I've got this thing, a couple of guys would like to go because of the benefits, and we can take a look at that, so.
Okay, because training is actually part of the retention plan that I'm working on.
Yep.
That's why I'm not interested in reducing it at this point, so we're, that's why I need more information.
Because we have, I just, I sent an email out because they're looking for members for the accident reconstruction team, for the tactical team, and for drug recognition experts. So, I sent an email out, said, anybody interested in this stuff? So far, I've got people interested in the accident reconstruction team, which is about a hundred and twenty hours of training and for the drug recognition classes. So, again, that's in the future. The more concerning one for me is the overtime. When I had done my budget, I had asked for that full-time position and thinking that possibly that wouldn't happen. The main concern of our officers, two things, when I sit down and do their evals with them, pay and staffing. And it's more so staffing than it is the pay. And so, in looking at the budget, asking for another officer to help with coverage so nobody's working alone when somebody takes vacation or is all sick, I also looked at the flip side of the coin and said, okay, if we don't get this officer, how can I ensure that we're going to have people in proper coverage? So, what I did was I looked at what we have, what our officers are able to take for vacation, and if everybody took the vacation, they don't always, but if they do, backfill that shift, post it for overtime, so we have the extra body here, nobody's by themselves. And that's twofold, because now they get the overtime to work that shift, that helps the money side of the coin. So, that's what's concerning to me. So, when we did it through the conservative number, to make that happen was fifteen thousand.
Maybe we can be partially conservative then, because I'm not making these just for the hack event.
No, I don't.
And I'm losing the bottom line, and I cannot support the kind of increases that we're looking at unless we start making some of these particular cuts. And this isn't even counting anything to do with the town center, so just to get it to a three percent increase.
Yep, no, I get it, I just want to make sure that, you know, you understand where I came from in putting the budget together, what I thought we needed.
Oh, definitely, definitely. As for what you need, we'll tell you what we can afford, so hopefully, there's someplace in the middle there, so.
We'll make it work. Tell me one more about the community outreach, can you?
That was going to be, we were going to try to start, start back up with the neighborhood watch programs, women's self-defense classes, things like that. That was just.
This is training you would provide?
Yes. Yeah, we would send our officers to be certified and then we would provide, or bring people in to do the training for us.
The neighborhood watch program is, you know, we've got signs. We had it back in the nineties. We have signs in several neighborhoods that say neighborhood watch, but we don't, we've never implemented the neighborhood.
Oh, we did, back in the nineties.
Well, we're back in the nineties.
So, this is.
Since then.
Right.
Anyway, it is something, again, that we need to.
Well, that's why I'm not, I don't agree with Scott, I don't think I want to zero on the budget. So, let's put that on.
No, I agree. We need to make it happen. We spent money for the signs and then, for whatever reason, we couldn't get it done.
Yeah, if it's part of community outreach, I think that's important as well.
Thank you.
Dispatch. Fire department, ambulance, fire.
Do you want me to start? Here's the wish. I haven't talked to him yet.
Okay.
Because I'm in favor of the new full-time person for the fire department, and I'm not in favor of the part-time person at this time. I would like to reduce vehicle equipment, maintenance and repair by five thousand dollars, bring that down to fifteen. I'd like to reduce conference and travel from a thousand to five hundred. And the last item, new equipment, I'd like to reduce it from twenty thousand to ten. I did have a question about cell phones. Was that in a different line on them before? Showing up now is fourteen forty. Previous years, it was in some other line on the chief?
We've never had cell phones on department, I did for my own. Fourteen is for the iPads.
Oh, it's for the iPads, okay.
We'd like to get two more. I recently purchased one for the command vehicle, just to see if we're going to use it or not.
Yep.
It's been a great deal of help with us. We have our pre-plans in it through IRM responding, the program we have, so we want to add two more this year.
Can I ask a question? Do you reimburse other people for their cell phones? Why don't we do that with you guys?
Something I choose not to.
Okay. It's your choice, though.
Yep.
But you know what's available?
Yep.
Okay.
So, what line were you taking at part-time?
It's in part-time FF wages, I believe. The total, I don't have it off the top of my head.
So, just so I, can we just have a discussion about that with the whole board? Because I'm going to try to plug numbers in for the next meeting. Just how does the board in its entirety feel about that?
I'm agreeing with the new position, full-time position. I agree with Scott. I'm a little over the part-time one.
Okay.
My opinion is that I am also, I am also an advocate for the part-time position.
Okay.
I mean, I understand, I understand we have a larger budget concern that's facing us, I realize that completely, but, you know, when you have a fire, you can't call the town center, you have to call the fire department, and they need, they need the resources. We know they need the resources to do what they, what they have to do. What is the lease agreements that we have that are ten thousand? Lease agreements, contracts?
The lease agreements that we have now is SCVA testing that has to happen every year, the air compressor inspection and testing of the air quality, our homotro extercation tools, they got to prevent maintenance done every year. We do SCVA fit testing for the.
The air compressor is for tanks, for body tanks, personnel tanks?
Yep, the SCVA, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it just takes the air. No. The SCVA fit testing, every member on the department gets fit tested for their masks for proper fit. We do the oxygen. We did have the oxygen that we use in our medical kits. We just, we found a savings in that. We were having the big bottles so that we could just fill off of them all the time and keep the bottles that we currently have. We worked out a deal with Main Oxy that we actually, when we're done with them and there's no more air, we just replace them, so it's kind of a one-for-one swap, and we did some saving in that. Nitrogen for the fire extinguishers that we do have for the department, so we recharge those. We do hose inspection and testing, and that's the biggest chunk, it's over three thousand dollars for that.
Fence for what?
Hose testing.
Hose testing.
We have a company come in from New Jersey, they come up into this area all the time. We're up to five departments now in three days that they come up and hit all at once, but they do all of our hose for us, and each truck takes about forty-five minutes, so for our department, it takes half a day for them to test all the hose properly. We get a full report of everything. If there's anything they do not pass, they set it aside so we can replace that. The pump testing and inspection on all the vehicles. We also do the fire extinguisher inspections for this building, we take out of that, and then the Comcast and internet, we do out of that.
And how do you break out your electricity, Scott?
That's just a shared cost with the.
So, to share?
Yeah. So, the police department, fire department, just split it fifty-fifty.
Now, of course, we're hoping that that budget gets reduced by the LEDs, but.
Can I bring up, can I bring up something? If you go downstairs to the kitchen and you turn on auto, if you're epileptic, you're going to have a fit, because it sits there. Why is that? Why is it doing that? I don't like that.
I don't, it's a good question.
I went in there, I thought I was going to pass out, because I'm not epileptic, but, because it was like the stroke thing, I thought it was in the sixty-something.
What they do.
Yeah, it's stroke, and it's like real freaky.
But that's the old fluorescent lights.
Oh, it's a new one. Really? It's a new one.
Oh, maybe because it's a motion sensor?
No, if you want to be for it. Yeah, it's a motion sensor. There's an on, auto, or off, and if you put it on the one of them, it kind of flickers the lights.
You put it on auto.
I think, yeah.
I think the switch is down.
So, maybe they'll do that. I thought I was going to. I thought I was gonna, hmm, hmm.
Yep.
I thought I smelled marijuana.
Lord knows, we don't want that, Scott.
But maybe milk gets a little bit, I don't know.
Yeah, that's good, that feels pretty good.
I have a question. I'm sorry, did you suggest reducing the new equipment budget to ten thousand dollars?
Yes, I did.
Yes. That's good.
The only thing I'd like to say about that is that, pretty much, all of our equipment comes out of that line. Titter mess, obviously, each year, if we need. Portables is something that we're looking into. I came to the board a couple of years ago, and we purchased five of them for fifteen thousand dollars. We don't have, those don't fit in CIP, so that's something that we're gonna have to update.
They don't fit in the CIP?
No, because they're not five thousand dollars apiece. Last time I brought it up to the CIP, I was told that it shouldn't go in there. So that's something that we've been trying to do, that we got off a grant twenty years ago from the state for all new radios, so we have to replace those ourselves. Any new hose, we purchase from that. The thermal imaging cameras in the past, which now has been updated in the CIP. So, yeah, last year was low, because we didn't need to buy any new equipment.
But Scott, in all fairness, for some of that, you did get grants to buy the equipment. It didn't have to consume your, your budget, right?
Yep, recently we got approved for a forestry grant, to buy all new gear for that, so, that was a fifty-fifty match, so it's, we're reducing it.
What did you wanna take it from? Ten?
Ten, Jim.
From twenty.
Can, you asked, or you stated, the vehicle equipment and maintenance, you wanted to...
Yep.
Do you need some repair?
Five thousand, reduction.
It was in the two...
Two fifteen?
Two fifteen.
Two fifteen.
From twenty to fifteen.
The only thing I have to say about that is that all the trucks are starting to get older, although we did buy a new command vehicle and tanker. We're having an issue with utility right now, utility won the red truck, it's out of service right now. And we're looking into a couple thousand dollars for that, with the engine, we're having an issue with the engine right now. That line, right now, I've always spent it already for this year, and that's without dealing with utility. We've just had a lot of broken-down equipment this year, so, we can get by. I just wanted to say that. And for the part-timer, the biggest help for me with the part-time position would have been that I was trying to move the deputy chief into a Monday through Friday. Right now he's covering the part-time shifts, just like everybody else, seven days a week, whenever he can fill in. I don't have much administration out during the day, so he was gonna help me with a lot of that. And he's already started stepping up and doing inspections for the town. We're looking at doing commercial inspections on his businesses, as well as apartment complexes and stuff. He's already reached out to a bunch of the apartment owners right now, so that's what we're looking to do. On certain days, we would put four of us here during the day, which has been a great help. We've had that a couple of times recently. Monday we had a fire, and there was four of us sitting here, and five of us, because I was doing payroll. So we're rolling out the door with a lot more people, so. That was gonna be the day that's helping me, was having him kind of in administrative role, helping out with the inspection, so.
Well, I'm not engaged it, but can't afford it. So, if we can find the savings someplace else, that's a possibility, at least for me. But that's...
Well, you, you understand, as Scott said, slick and bug, we said earlier, if you see yourself running into a problem relative to some of this, as we move through the year, you come back and report. Okay, anything, any comments? Motor enforcement?
No change.
I'd like to reduce overtime from like five hundred dollars to five hundred dollars. Yeah, that's been a, so...
So you wanna make it five hundred dollars?
Make it five, I don't wanna take it completely away, but...
EOC?
Supply line?
I would like to reduce the supply line by two thousand dollars to four.
Well, I'd like to know more about what it is we need to buy. We had a couple of reports that were done by outside agencies, they did say we needed to improve the equipment in some areas, as long as we can, as long as we can get to where we need to go relative to their assessment. So, I'll be, uh, Karen, that was, that's Chief Scott.
Maybe he'll assign it to his assistant.
The, we're talking about the line item of six thousand dollars for the EOC supplies? How much of that is, if you would, critical to get us to where we, we need to comply with everything that came up in the last report?
Right, what we've usually done in the past is we haven't really touched that line item, because that buys any supplies if we have, if we do have emergency. If we have a weather event or anything like that, so we try and tend to hold off on spending most of that money, so we'll have something.
Yes, but we had an assessment when we did the, when we did the EOC drill.
Yep.
And they gave us the report, they said, you, you, we recommend the following, or you should do this, you should do that. My, and my, I feel as though, yes, we should tend to do that, so that we are up to standard.
The biggest thing, me and Chief Drunsfield sat down the other day with the state of Hampshire, we're quoting for EMPG grant for the phones in this building. That was one of the things, we're gonna have a better working phone than that, if we get that EMPG grant. The other thing we purchased recently was a laptop, so there's a digital laptop for the EOC now, with all the passwords on it. So, I'd say a couple thousand dollars for the equipment in that room, and we'd be up to where that reform's staying. But that money also, it's used for the equipment for the room, but it's also used for any supplies that we might need if we have, if we have emergency. But we do need to purchase some cots right now. The cots that we had were, got ruined by mice, chewed right through.
So you're okay if we reduce it to four thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's see, we did highway, so we're now at the transfer shift.
I have two, I would like to remove, or zero out, part-time clerical wages of a hundred dollars. And I would like to reduce office supplies from fifteen hundred to a thousand. I don't know, it's like, ten, eleven...
There it is, over there. From fifteen to a thousand.
Yep. And the fourth line, part-time clerical wages from longer to...
Yeah, Scott, that's really useful.
Okay, John? Count the minister.
I believe that Mr. Panigan may want to speak with you about the solid waste budget.
On the MSW? We've been crunching numbers for a while. And I, I keep coming up with numbers that the MSW, and I end up getting around seventy-one to seventy-two thousand. I estimated that by what we did last year. Seventeen and eighteen. So we did roughly around a hun, a thousand seventy-three tons, thirty, plus thirty, forty, seventy-four tons. That brings us out to like sixty-nine to seventy-one thousand.
So if we reduce it to seventy-three, the...
From...
I would leave it at the seventy-three.
Okay.
Um, the other thing that we just need to make sure we have history on is now we pay for glass.
Whereas, you know, some of the history that you're looking at in this budget was when glass was thirty dollars, and now glass is sixty-five dollars. I don't know what that is.
And the hauling costs?
And the hauling cost, I did some numbers on that, for the MSW and the CND, based on last, you know, last fiscal year, I end up getting twenty-three, three twenty-four. And then plus the, the NRA, that was scrap metal propane, that was an extra, like, scrap metal was two, two thousand four hundred forty-eight. Propane's like twenty-five dollars for each pickup. And I get also two electronics, we're averaging about six to seven every six months, so roughly around twelve pickups. That's, that rounds up to about nine hundred dollars, so, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven. That's what I came up with.
The other, the other thing, though, is that, I'm assuming, if we pursue after our visit to Elliott Main, if we pursue the composting program, it's gonna require, it's gonna have costs associated to implement it, right?
Exactly, it's gonna have a hauling fee.
We need to identify what that is, and then come back and, and see, you know, what it's gonna take to get into the composting. We know if we implement it correctly over a period of time, it should save us, should save us money, based on the info we got from Elliott Main's transfer station.
Right.
But it's gonna be a matter of what it takes to implement it with Fox or whoever.
Yeah, actually, they're actually gonna come down, and we're gonna get together when the solid waste committee, I already informed them, then they'll give us concrete numbers.
Okay.
So you said twenty-seven thousand?
Well, I, I would suggest dropping it by ten thousand, so putting it at twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight?
Yeah, we're, we have, as of January first, we are now free of Lamprey Regional Co-op when it comes to hauling, and we put it out, and now we're a shipyard, and, you know, we've been working with shipyard because they work with Lamprey. I would, we may want to put it in twenty-eight thousand.
And then I'd say, when you figure out what the, the food waste thing is, we can put that in there someplace.
Okay.
Because it should, if, if the program gets up and running and successful, it will reduce your MSW, because...
Well, I know that, if Elliott's numbers are correct, and I'm sure they are, they had their act together on it, it can be very significant for us, so.
Good. Yeah, twenty-eight thousand.
Good.
Okay.
Now, what about the part-timer, full-timer bit, or?
It's already been...
It's probably been decided.
I agree with the ABC that not at this particular time.
Okay.
The only other thing that the ABC suggested is, we need, as a town, and I know you're not, your operation is not unique, what can we do to attract people to those particular positions that you already have?
I think it has a lot to do, the full-time is, is the money, but the part-time?
Yeah.
It, it is basically the, the money, and a lot of people now, they want insurance, that's... So that's why I suggested maybe it was, if we could do something to put the two part-timers together, and have one full-timer instead of the two part-timers. But that's, that's the direction that I was looking into. Because nobody's actually been three months now, we have quite, you know, a couple people, but, some too, they probably got, you know, they get no show for the medical and stuff, so that throws up a red flag.
Well, my, my concern, which we should've talked about a little bit before, is in terms of somebody being up on the wall all the time.
Yes, yes, exactly.
So, I don't know if we can... Find somebody that isn't a solid waste operator, I don't know.
Well, I'm coming up right now with, working with the guys right now, what we could do to make sure there's a person up on that wall. And then kind of back down on a few things, what we need to do during the day, during work hours, if we could, to focus on out, out back.
Yep. The only thing that the ABC was suggesting is possibly more money in his hourly wages, so he can pay them a little bit more. So, that's the only thing that I would suggest. But I'm not in favor of full-time personnel, other than full-time personnel in the transfer station at this time.
I also have one more item, that we end up, right now, if you look down to refrigeration, that's under glass, and that's where that's, the last six months, we've been having a company coming in and doing refrigeration for us. So right now, we've had them come in about six times already, seven, six times, it's up to about two thousand, twenty, twenty-six hundred dollars right now, that's where we're at right now. It's not even the end of the year yet. So, right there, that's where I requested a thirty-five hundred dollars to try to cover that, so we can manage that part. And so this is actually the first time we're doing this. So, just wanna throw that out to the board here.
Okay.
So that could cost a little bit more than what you're thinking it is, but we don't know until we get concrete numbers, because there's so many people bringing in the refrigerations and conditions and stuff. Condition, so. So I just wanna bring that up to your attention.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Toby.
So you wanna do anything with southeast water kettle lines?
I contemplated it by left wing.
How about animal control?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Who takes care of animals? You don't spend much in that line.
I'd like to reduce it from a thousand to five hundred.
Typically been used for, if we bring an animal to the stratum, to the SPCA, and we incur costs because of that. But since we've had Facebook, what we do now is we bring the animal back, post it, and ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, we find the owner. I can't remember the last time we actually had to transport a dog to the SPCA, plus we have the chip reader, which helps as long as more people are chipping their dogs, so, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd like to go down to five hundred, I agree with that, then. Take it, Tom.
El.
El.
Okay.
El.
I think we've met with all those people, I don't know if, all of them came in.
All of them.
Goodwin didn't come in, I don't know.
I would like to propose us reduce Goodwin by twenty-one twenty, if we bring it down to what we gave them.
To four?
Four, four thousand three, is actually what we gave them last year. I'd like to propose the homeless Shenandoah Stratford County from two thousand to one thousand. I'd like to propose that we take out the Great Bay Rotary in Durham, thousand, reduce it to zero. And I would recommend we reduce, or not fund, because it's, the Cornerstone VNA from thirty-four sixty-four to zero.
To zero?
Yep, they're new this year.
I'm sorry, they're what?
They're new this year.
So we don't give them anything when they're new?
We don't say, we don't stuff when they're old? We've got enough commitments as it is, and my thing is, they're a new request.
Okay.
I'd love to give them money, but I can't do that.
I disagree.
Okay.
I disagree with the, with the homeless. It's a serious problem out there. And to take money out of that program, I think is a, is a mistake on our part.
Well, we gave them thousand dollars previous years, and they increased their request this year, so.
And I don't know everything that Cornerstone VNA does, so I guess I need to know more about just exactly what it is, the services they provide. And the fact that they're new, to me, simply reinforces the fact that there's a need. And I can tell you, based on my experience, there is a need, a serious need. So, I understand that we're trying to move some funds around. I just, I just wanna be sure that we understand there's people out there we need to help, and, and we can help. So before we just arbitrarily say, okay, take this, I'd like to know more about what VNA does.
According to their application, they service thirty-five Lee residents with six hundred and eighty-three visits, in, I think it was...
It's health, or is it...
January to July. Visiting nurses, yes.
Visiting nurses, okay, it's a visiting nurses association. How many residents, I'm sorry?
Thirty-five, for a total of six hundred and eighty-three visits.
Six hundred and eighty-three visits, six eighty-three into thirty-four sixty-four is what, fifty dollars a visit?
So it won't be compromising fifteen hundred.
I'm just looking at, the budget for our social agencies in that category is twenty thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight, and the request this year is twenty-eight thousand, so an increase of eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And I'm just, and I'm not saying the Cornerstone VNA is not a wormy organization, I bet it is. But we can't give everything to everybody that they ask for.
I understand that, I think we're a long way from hitting that goal. Okay.
So we're leaving it at zero?
I don't wanna take it to zero.
I said fifteen hundred.
Why would we cut it in the fifteen hundred?
For now.
The recommendation.
We have another opportunity ahead of us. This is the first clip. General assistance?
General assistance.
General assistance. I have a question in terms of the cell phone. We keep budgeting six hundred and she charges three seventy, how did we get to?
I don't know, because we pay the bill.
Yeah, I know, so. If it's three seventy, let's budget four hundred, but if it's.
No, it's, it's, it's close to six hundred dollars.
So what is five forty-three?
It gets forty-six or forty-seven, actually, there's a bill in the manifest.
Okay, it was a question, it wasn't a.
I don't know how we only spent three hundred and seventy in fiscal eighteen, that doesn't make sense to me.
Maybe it was chart something, I don't know, it was just a question, it was a question.
Um, let's see, parks and recreation.
Starting at the bottom, I'd like to reduce, unless there's some other information, but reduce it from fifteen hundred to, to a thousand. The other thing is, under supplies, I'd like to reduce that by thirty-two eighty, bring it this back to, what, two thousand dollars?
So you wanna take it to thirty-two eighty, or by thirty-two eighty?
Thirty-two eighty is coming off, so it's two three thousand.
Okay.
Uh, and then recreation events, I'd like to drop that by seventy-one fifty and bring it back to five thousand. And we as a group need to have a conversation about the Lidda River, Oyster River Youth Association.
I'm sorry, well, did you wanna make a, the recreation events, what was your suggestion?
Take it to five thousand.
Five thousand.
And down to five.
And then a conversation about Oyster River Youth. We've all heard that Durham is reducing, but not cutting, Oyster River Youth, I'm not sure what Madbury is doing, so we have to have a conversation.
I don't think Madbury's changing anything.
You have a reduction of anything?
Nope, I thought we should have a conversation, because that's more of a policy thing than. I know the direction Durham's going in, but I don't know if we wanna follow Durham, or if we wanna stay supporting it for another year.
I don't see any reason to follow Durham. What, what is the, the five thousand dollars that we're taking out, do we have any idea what the, well, they only spent, what, six thousand?
Yep, it was for a scheduling person, I believe.
Okay, got it.
Well, they were increasing their program budget.
Yep.
What did you wanna do with the fifteen hundred, Scott?
I wanted to reduce it by five hundred to a thousand.
Okay.
Cause just based on what electricity is costing, even if you give it a little bit of increase.
We have a white full time on the flag, don't we, or not?
That's batteries, so that's not covered.
Okay, I was just wondering.
It's a dark skies light, put that in the, put that in the minutes, it's a dark skies light, points down. It takes eight double A batteries, so just whatever that cost is, it's been running for almost two years now, so. Well, it charges for the sun.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, man, that's a.
The batteries are like, we like to charge batteries. We're using solar power, it's solar powered.
No, it's great, that's good, we should be able to put some panels on the roof of the pavilion and get some of the sun. Uh, let's see, we're at, uh.
Oh, Oyster River Youth, are we gonna fund them fully? I would suggest we fund them fully.
I, I think at this point here, do we find a different way to handle it?
For who, I'm sorry, Oyster River Youth?
Oyster River, yeah, okay.
Absolutely, cause I think what would happen is.
It's just too much disarray.
Well, also, in terms of the people from those particular towns, that their town isn't supporting them, you charge extra, to make a difference, so. I know there are, plus I know they're looking at different funding models, so I would suggest we do another one.
Just put it on.
Okay.
Library.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Any questions, Karen?
No, I have no cuts proposed for the library.
Yay, that's what we like to hear.
That's a rarity.
Could you, would you speak into the microphone?
Mr. Brown has no cuts. I have no questions.
You're right. John?
There we go. Look at.
Let's do this here next year.
And patriotic purposes, no, no problem there.
I have a question.
Okay.
The expenses in two thousand eighteen, that's where we replaced all the bounties and everything, right?
We did replace bounties, but there was, uh, I think, when the board agreed to give the Rotary five hundred or seven hundred and fifty dollars for fireworks, I think that's where it came out of.
Oh, that's where it came out of, okay.
Well, that would've been, is that fiscal eighteen or fiscal nineteen?
This is eighteen.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get the detail on that.
John, any comments? Conservation?
Conservation. Is that this one?
Well, that was under patriotic purposes.
Well, it's had culture and recreation, or RE, whatever that is.
It's the Heritage Commission and the Ag Commission.
Right, I'm suggesting that the Ag Commission could reduce to zero.
Cause they haven't spent it.
They haven't spent, they got like, almost six thousand dollars in their account. For me, it's the same thing as the Conservation Commission and the Heritage Commission, they've got large amounts in their, in their accounts. But we use that and they come back to us for more. That's just me.
Yep, that's good. Okay.
All right.
So that got us down to?
Who knows?
Yeah, I'll plug numbers in and.
You can plug it in.
Long for, yeah, I'd like to get rid of that. Uh, the last one that I had is in terms of transfer of the trust funds.
Do you trust funds? Do you wanna, okay, better.
Oh, do you do, however?
Well, we typically do that through the warrant.
Okay, that's fine.
Because that's where we see the CIP.
I'll hold my comment.
So you make those changes, put them in a different code?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on.
What's the meeting?
We are. We are down to Selectman Budby for a Town Center Project Presentation Discussion.
We need to talk about the warrant.
Oh, the warrant article, where, oh, I'm sorry.
Three B.
Three B, got it.
So we can actually start with Article Three. And changes, comments?
I have comments, but.
Yeah, I do still, I still have not gotten an answer from Bond Council regarding the spending the interest, so I'm still waiting for anything on that.
Anything in terms of, if this was to pass, taking them in increments, the additional costs, if there are any? So for instance, let's say it's a three million dollar bond, can we take a million, a million and billion?
I believe we can, but I'll double check that.
Is there additional cost, because you thought that there was an initial cost, and then every time you take a disbursement, then another cost set up? Cause it might be to spread it out, so we're not paying interest on something that we're not actually using, cause they're gonna charge us more just than we get in the account.
Yeah, pay as you go, kind of thing.
You don't say, throw it to you.
Okay, yep. So no other comments on the amounts, or anything at this point? Article Four is the operating budget, so we don't know quite yet. We can either talk about the default budget now, or after we've gone through.
We'll just go through this one.
Now, Article Five is for.
Breathing apparatus.
Breathing apparatus for the fire department, but as of the time I put this together, the fire chiefs do not yet have the dollar amount.
We met with two air pack manufacturers recently, I'm hoping to get a quote from one of them by tomorrow. Um, we're still looking for the other quote from the other manufacturer, but we're looking to buy hopefully twenty at this time, which would fill all of the trucks that we have.
Approximately how much?
The CIP says a hundred and thirty thousand. And I tried to get quotes the last couple of years, to make sure that we were up to date with everything. So right now, we're just gonna wait for the quotes, there's different options that we can take away, or put on certain packs, not all of them, so we're looking at the.
Usually the ones the last ten years, and then you gotta replace them.
Uh, no, these last twenty. It's kinda funky the way this one's hitting right now, um, you gotta hydro, sort of, hydro the bottles every five years, so you get three cycles. So we're coming down to that last cycle, so we can't hydro them anymore. Speaking with CIP Committee, they wanted to bump this up, because next year, hopefully, we're asking for a new engine. So with the dollar amounts, they wanted to bump this up here, and actually, it works out better, because the bottles, uh, we won't be able to use the bottles.
So even if there's a hydrostatic test, we can't, we can't go?
There's no more hydrostatic tests, we're like, we're, we've already done that last one, so they're good for five years. But the way, with the fiscal year, if it got approved even next year, they'd be out of date in April, and we couldn't purchase them until July, so we bumped it up here.
But you should know that soon, in terms of.
Yeah.
Wait, double A.
Double A. Thermal imaging camera?
Thermal imaging camera. I have a dollar amount for that.
Uh, roughly fifteen thousand dollars, um, we bought one two years ago, that was a little more than fourteen thousand dollars, that was for the NFP approved camera. We have three of them, that new equipment line, a couple years ago, we bought the latest camera out of that line item. So I've talked to the CIP Committee, they were in there, they were kinda far out, um, I think they were another seven or eight years. The ones that we have currently, the screens are breaking, just because they're so old, um, they're almost thirteen years old, the technology is completely out of date, the size of them, everything, so. We're going with the CIP Committee, they asked if we could go for one this year, and then another one next year, so that the three engines would have a, a tank, or one tanker, the two engines, but have new cameras.
And then all be the same, or it wouldn't be different?
Article Seven.
Uh, Article Seven is to deposit a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the Fire Equipment Capital Reserve Fund.
I do have something I wanna add to that, though. And I know we're trying to save money, and I apologize for this. Ten years ago, maybe less than that, Durham Fire left UNH Dispatch, this has been a conversation that we've had with Advisory Budget Committee, um, and the dispatching services that we use. When Durham left, Barrington, Lee and Madbury came together and became a group, um, we felt like we had a bigger say with UNH Police Department, who does our dispatching. Um, we've tried to do everything the same, and over the times, we've worked together to work on new frequencies, to get us off of Seacoast, which half of all the Seacoast area departments are still on that channel. There's too many people talking on that, we got our own channel, which is owned by Madbury Fire. And so any changes that we make, or mutually run cards with Dispatch, we all have the same ones, so it's easier for Dispatch. So we've been working together as a team, to get the best service we can from UNH. Because we changed frequencies, and this was something I didn't know, um, when it all happened, the old channel we're on, Seacoast Fire, was boosted pretty significantly. And if the FCC ever found out, we would've been in some big trouble. The frequencies are a certain one, and when the old company came in to work on the system, oh, nobody can hear us in town, we'll just turn it up, but you can't do that. So we have a new frequency, it's just our frequency that McGregor utilizes as well, but it's Barrington, Lee and Madbury on that channel. Part of this, though, is that we've, we have a lot of dead zones in town. We've been working with two-way communication and not, um, Newington, sorry, um, they gave us like a coverage map, like you would see for cell phone care, and from George Bennett, south is pretty blue, which means we have pretty bad, um, service down in that area. For radios, it's a horrible thing, we have a lot of car accidents down 125, by the racetrack, and some of the other intersections, so, working with the other communities, the plan was for us to put a repeater up and down, and that's something that has not been done, um, and this was a couple chiefs ago. So I would like to work towards that, um, and get that repeater. We did work with two-way communication, we came up with a quote for a repeater, and to update the whole overall system, which would be, um, working with UNH Dispatch to help their console. And then Barrington would have some costs with their repeater, and then our repeater, and currently, we have Williamson's, um, frequency. So that's the one we talk on, because we're closer to Williamson Tower. Barrington Fire has their own, which is the Barrington repeater over nine. Depending on where you are in town, you're supposed to change your radio for going to that tower, whichever one you can hit closer. With this, um, quote, it would make it so that the system would all work together, it doesn't matter where you are, the radios are smart enough that it would pick up the right repeater. So the total for that, on the quote that we just received, for all communities and UNH Dispatch, is two hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. It's to upgrade the whole overall system. So I was, I was working with the CIP Committee, and it was an oversight. I asked them, because I didn't know if we wanted to make a different line in the CIP for radio infrastructure, if we wanted to just put it in the Fire Equipment Fund. And I would like to ask the board to see if we could raise that by fifty thousand dollars to go towards the repeater. The other two communities have been putting money away a little bit faster than us, um, so they're ready to move on this. I will say, it's not something that we, we're not holding up the other communities, they can still move forward with their, um, portion of us.
So our piece of it is two hundred and forty-three thousand?
No, that's for everything.
Okay, but then what's our piece?
We still need to talk, as a group, and with the select boards, in all of our towns, and figure out a way that we're gonna figure out who has to pay for what for this. The tower in Lee won't affect Barrington, they'll never use it, so why would they pay for it? But why should we pay for Barrington's repeater as well? There is some UNH Dispatch costs that all the communities can share, so that's our next up, we just got this quote the other day. But in the oversight, it never got added into the CIP, but I would like to move forward with this, cause we're five years behind on the radios, sorry.
So you wanna increase that by fifty thousand, to make it two hundred thousand?
So, did they give you a proposed location for this repeater in town?
We're trying to work, and I've been working with Karen on this one, for the, um, the tower right across from the racetrack.
Oh, yep, that's a cell tower.
Yep, we've tried, when the planning board accepted that, there was talk about the company allowing the town to utilize them for free, um, if they still uphold by them. Cause there was nothing in writing that said that they would. If they do that, it will cut down on the cost, because they have a building to house a generator that we would need, so there's a couple things that they have. If it's a different site, then we're gonna have to look at a different quote. I've reached out to the company by phone, emails, uh, Joe Lamardo's reached out to them numerous times, and now we have two-way working with them as well. So I'm hoping to get ahold of somebody to see if we can utilize them.
One of the things that, because that tower's close to my house, I'm in a dead zone, but, um, when we had the ice storm in December of whenever it was, we were out for eleven days, that thing only worked for a little bit more than a day, in terms of that generator. So if you're counting on that particular power, that would have to be upgraded some way, so that that generator kicks in and stays going the whole time, not just power along with the fuel that's provided us. That's something that you guys would have to look at, so if you're using that, take the facility.
Yeah, and repeaters from the A is a new thing, um, Barrington's had theirs for a while, and when their power goes down, I know they run up with a generator and plug it in somehow. So that might be something that's small enough, is one of our Honda Generes that we currently have, that I can just run up there and plug it in, and we're good to go. The system won't go down completely, we just lose the, the strength down in that side of town, but that's something we definitely look out.
Increasing it by fifty. And you can discuss that with the town.
What's up?
I'm ready, number three, the pregnant and delivered section, you can have that discussion with the town.
Okay.
Article Eight is one hundred thousand dollars to be deposited into the Town Building Capital Reserve Fund.
I'd like to reduce that to thirty-five, but it wasn't previously, we raised it because of the, the, um, town center facility stuff that we were doing.
So ripple effect from the TCBC improvement should be part of, captures part of this or not?
No, it's not counting on any of this.
It's not counting on any of it?
No, as far as I remember now. So I'd reduce that to thirty-five, but it's been previous years.
Article nine is to deposit sixty thousand dollars into the highway department road and bridge improvement capital reserve fund. Article ten is to deposit fifty-five thousand into the highway equipment capital reserve fund. Article eleven is to deposit thirty-eight thousand into the transportation equipment capital reserve fund. Article twelve is to deposit twenty thousand into fire pond and cistern capital reserve fund. Article thirteen is to deposit twenty thousand into the rebound capital reserve fund. Article fourteen is to deposit fifteen thousand into the internal service fund for free benefits. Article fifteen is to deposit six thousand into the recreation capital reserve fund.
I'd like to propose that go to zero.
I'm in agreement. Sorry? I'm in agreement.
To reduce it to zero? Can I ask, how we, how do we, where do we get that, where we would make a decision to take it to zero?
Well, the overall problem that I have in terms of that and other things is the CIP is a planning tool, not a spending tool. And I think the board needs to go through each and one of those particular items in the CIP and see if we're willing to support that particular item, whatever it happens to be. Majority of them, I have no problem with, some of them are saving for something that we don't necessarily are gonna do. The six thousand is for a tennis court, have no plans to do anything with it, so why do we keep putting money aside for something that we probably, in my estimation, are not gonna do in the future?
I agree, I agree. If the six thousand is earmarked for a tennis court, absolutely. Can we back up just for a minute? The, uh, the cisterns capital reserve fund, if I remember right, the average cost of a cistern now is eighty thousand dollars to install? So, so this is one-fourth of what it takes to do one cistern. Four years of this level would give us one cistern. And how many, how many cisterns do we have a requirement for? If we were going to, if we were going to put in enough cisterns to, if you would be responsive relative to water requirements for the various neighborhoods, what would we need?
The, um, two chiefs ago, did a water study for the whole community. We GPSed everything that we did have, we looked at the parts of town that we don't have water supply. We came up with, I think there's four more on the plans right now, more of them being the, uh, the center of town that we'd like to work in with the town center committee. But as of right now, the plan only had those four. I think it's a good...
Four and eighty is three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
I think we're in a good place with the ones that are on the plan now, for most of our community's gonna have the covers that it needs.
The, that capital reserve fund currently has a balance of almost a hundred and eight thousand dollars.
It also does...
A hundred and eight, something up for one cistern.
It also does the fire ponds, and we just recently dredged James Arm and Cameran, so that was completed. Something that I do need to look at and talk to the board and the CIP committee is how do we do maintenance on some of those fire ponds? We just spent all that money, but in twenty years, we're gonna have to do it all over again. Is there something that we can do? And I've been talking to Steve to see if there's something that the highway department can run through once a year and just cut back the trees and stuff to keep the leaves. So it's small maintenance for these ponds, so we're not gonna have to go back as, as soon. But that's also the funding in that line, a hundred and eight, whatever. Just gonna do it the way it is.
Article sixteen is to establish a contingency fund for twenty thousand dollars of funding to come from the unassigned fund balance.
Yes.
And I received a request from the heritage commission to ask if the board would consider putting another article on the warrant. Will the town suspend efforts to remove or demolish the Lee Parish House until July one, twenty twenty, to allow the Lee Heritage Commission sufficient time to explore options for its preservation and future use and to submit a proposal for the March twenty twenty ballot? As you may recall, the warrant article last year, relative to the purchase of the church property, called for the parish house to be removed by July first, twenty nineteen. So six months from now.
I'm not in favor of putting that forth.
I am in favor of putting it forth.
You are in favor?
I am.
And you're not in favor?
That's correct.
Can you give me reasons? I'm just asking for more information on your decision.
My decision is that, we went through the swamp last year, and Julie just stated that part of it was to remove it. And state is, look at it, and they didn't find anything of interest in historical value. So it was already voted gone and passed.
My reasons, um, it's not gonna kill us to wait another year. The town center vision plan for that town center has nothing to do with that particular section. Give it time, they can figure out something to do with it, to move it, to restore it or whatever. It is eligible for grants. The Historical Society has expressed an interest in taking it over. And the thing is, the town won't have to spend the twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars to have it removed, but it doesn't cost us anything to give us another, give them another year, because they would still have to come back and get permission from the legislative bodies to do anything with it, because it's still town property, well, as of the fourteenth. So...
Okay, I, I, I'll vote to, to say, let's give them, let's give them the time.
Okay, I will have this for next meeting. Any other changes?
Do you extend those to a four? Because the next one is the fourteenth, correct?
Well, we have so many meetings in January. Do you remember the next Monday? So yes, the fourteenth, yes. The fourteenth is the next...
So can you send, just before that's written?
Okay. And finally, the default budget, you, I hope, at least glanced at.
Yes.
The information provided by NHMA, um, over the past couple of years, the legislature has been making changes to the rules regarding default budgets. I guess what had been happening in a number of communities and maybe school districts is that by utilizing the confusion in the existing law, it was not unusual for the default budget to be higher than the proposed new budget, thus therefore somewhat defeating the purpose of why we have the default budget for SB two communities. But they, they've kind of clarified it, so as you can see, our default budget truly is the current budget. There's no, there aren't any adjustments to be made to it, so... Any questions?
No questions.
So I need to get the board to make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve the default budget?
A motion to approve the default budget. And if you, FY nineteen, as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I just need your signature.
Fire chiefs up again.
Actually, the public budget hearing is still open.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion from your board or comment from the public before you close the public hearing?
Any comments? Scott, anything?
Just, just I reiterate the, um, we need to look at the budget quite closely because I'm looking, at least personally, at like no more than three percent increase before the town center project, so I don't mind looking at all these other things that we've talked about adding, but I'm kind of, three percent is kind of like my line in the sand, so...
John?
No comment.
No comment? No comment? Any comments? Okay, we'll close the, uh, the budgets session. So I will open the meeting. Select board meeting, start with Scott Nemitz on hazard mitigation, please.
If you'd like to work out tonight?
Yes.
Recently, uh, the town received an EMPG grant to update our hazardous mitigation plan, uh, her federal government, we're supposed to do it every so often. And so with that awarded grant, we worked with Stratford Regional Planning Commission to develop and update the hazardous mitigation plan that we have. Myself, Bill Booth, Bill Inspector, Harry Mueller, operations for McGregor, Karen Rossi, planning and zoning, an assistant EMD, Julie, the town administrator, Steve, the highway supervisor, and Chief Johnsfield, attended multiple meetings to go through the hazardous mitigation plan that we currently have and update it. So with that, and the grant has been covered in kind with us going to all the meetings. The next step in the process is for the board to sign a certificate of adoption. It was approved by the state of New Hampshire, and after it's adopted, hopefully by the selectmen, then it'll go down to FEMA to be adopted by the federal government. And Kyle from Stratford Regional Plan has been handling all of that for us.
Chief, does the board actually read the resolution into the minutes?
I don't know.
Probably should.
Probably should.
I don't think it would hurt.
CYA.
I was not told in my email from Kyle that that needed to be done. I was, he sent a, um, he sent out a form to us to sign it.
I thought you were gonna read it into the minutes. I, I can do it if you want me to.
Go ahead.
We could have John sing it.
Certificate of adoption, town of Lee, New Hampshire, select board, a resolution adopting the Lee, New Hampshire multi-hazard mitigation plan update, two thousand and nineteen. Whereas, the town of Lee authorizes responsible departments and/or agencies to execute their responsibilities demonstrated in the plan and receive funding from the NH office of homeland security and emergency management under a pre-disaster mitigation grant and assistance from Stratford Regional Planning Commission in the preparation of the Lee, New Hampshire multi-hazard mitigation plan update, two thousand and nineteen. And whereas several public planning meetings were held between October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and December two thousand and eighteen regarding the development and review of the Lee, New Hampshire multi-hazard mitigation plan update, two thousand and nineteen. And whereas, the Lee, New Hampshire multi-hazard mitigation plan update, two thousand and nineteen contains several potential future projects to mitigate hazard damage in the town of Lee. And whereas, a duly noticed public meeting was held by the Lee Select Board on January second, twenty nineteen, to formally approve and adopt the Lee, New Hampshire multi-hazard mitigation plan update, two thousand and nineteen. Now, Thor, now therefore be it resolved that the Lee Select Board adopts the Lee, New Hampshire multi-hazard mitigation plan update, twenty nineteen.
Did you write that? I wonder what year that was? Who did?
Some attorney somewhere.
Whereas, we got that out of the way, we'll move on.
Thank you.
So now, as I see it, selectman Bugby, town center project presentation discussion.
Couple of things, we're scheduled to do a presentation next Monday. The TCBC is gonna give the presentation, Laval Bressinger is gonna be there to answer questions. Couple of things that have come up, which it's a question to this particular board. We were tasked to come up with, um, a presentation based on the four point three million dollar project cost. One of the things that we've noticed in terms of looking at LVA's proposal to us, or design for us, is, um, the program requirements for the municipal building seem to be smaller than what the program requirements are. And we've also noticed that the library is larger than the program requirements that were asked for. So we've got those two things we're trying to deal with. And based on what the board has told us, we've gone and done the presentation based on the four point three million. The conversation involved into, are there any ways we can get this particular cost down? So my first question to the board is, are you wedded to the four point three? If we can find ways to reduce that number, would you be amenable?
Oh, obviously, yes.
I do not want to assume.
Obviously, yes.
Okay, yes. Thank you. Okay, you've been onto the hook, now you're gonna gank it in.
Here comes the rest.
One of the things that we've been toying with is because initially, we were told basement costs were very high. And one of the things we've come to realize from updated numbers from Laval Bressinger is basement additions are relatively inexpensive, not cheap, but inexpensive, cheaper. So one of the things that a couple of members have been toying with is making some changes, specifically to the library. Right now, their expansion is about four, almost four thousand square feet, reducing that to two thousand square feet addition, but putting a basement underneath it and using that basement area as their meeting space. I know they haven't heard this yet, and once, just a minute, just a minute. And just based on the numbers that we've run, we reduced the cost of the project by six to seven hundred thousand dollars.
How much?
Six to seven hundred thousand dollars.
By putting in a basement and reducing it to two thousand, you're gonna reduce costs by six to seven hundred thousand? I'd like to see the man on that.
Yeah, me too.
We have the man right here, so...
Good.
But that's not something we're gonna present on Monday.
Oh, okay.
So we're gonna present the four point three million.
Yes.
But I think that's something that maybe we should explore, um, because certain members believe that the, the bond for three point seven eight million dollars is a little bit too much. But we're going by what the board asked us to do, and we're abiding by that. But if the board would like us to explore, these are options, we'd be amenable to do that. But the presentation on the seventh will be for the four point three million dollars.
So I think I, I have to respond. Certainly, the board wants you to explore good business options, and good business options are always looking at, how can we get cost out of the project if we're, you know, far in excess of what we anticipate or whatever? I guess we just pursue it and we'll see what, what the responses are, and then when we have the next meeting, we'll, uh...
Well, yes, this is the first time they're in...
Exactly.
Yeah.
The mouths haven't come, oh, come closed yet.
Yeah, understand.
But basically, they get the same amount of space, um, instead of using the, uh, old part of the, um, the, um, schoolhouse as the meeting room, it would be in the, the undersection of their new facility.
Are you looking at cost reductions in other areas too, or are we just...
We're looking at all kinds of things, so, but we were tasked by the board to do this, and we're, we're set for doing that. So that's why they asked if I would come, I offered to come and, um, ask if that was something you'd be interested in.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, are we taking the same critical look at, if you would, at the new, the new town building and, uh, the annex, which John has thoughts of, and etcetera? Move it somewhere.
Well, the, the thing is, the presentation on the seventh, there's gonna be probably questions. That's just the first iteration. And we're just saying, you know, we're looking at a bond, we have to have that particular presentation and let them know what we're thinking, but it doesn't have to be the three point eight million dollars, it can be less. But it really starts the conversation. And I think the more that you look at those particular details, you can probably... details, you can probably find some cost relations in that, and I think, I'm, I'm glad you guys said you were exploring, reducing the costs, but, you know, that's something that concerns members of the committee in terms of the costs, so.
I think it's a good option to look at trying to reduce costs, but at the same time, I do understand that it depends on the functions, what those rooms are made for, or the expansion of the library, so it's associated with the functional needs, but it should be explored.
Yes.
Okay, you come prepared to talk about, uh, excuse me, Trinkle-Palacia, Whizwall Road, and the library trustee, um, I am slightly flabbergasted by the idea of cutting the addition by half, is this, I'm hearing, this is what I heard correctly, right, going from thirty-nine hundred square feet to two thousand?
No, it would still be the same amount of space, but instead of being on the first floor, the meeting room could be on the second, on the basement, so the space would be the same.
What do you need to do that? You need an elevator.
Yeah.
To support.
And the structural steel to support the stacks.
And the structural steel because it's, you know, be wide, I mean, one of the reasons we wanted to build on the slab was because it supports stacks, you know, Ruth and I were talking about this earlier today, um, depending upon the size, you get into structural steel, which is more expensive, I mean, so, I don't know if that's been considered, and I would hope that the trustees would be considered as well as the library before any, any talk of this ever.
I'm asking.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask, I understand, I understand your motion, and I'm gonna ask that you now wait for the meeting with the T C V C to express all of your, uh, problems that you have with that, with that suggestion, and would that be okay with you?
Sure.
I think it's more appropriate to be held in front of the whole committee, that's all.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
That's true, but it would've been nice if they had approached us.
I understand.
As opposed to getting blindsided.
No, that's not the point, the point was, we were tasked for the job, I have to get permission from this board to explore something like this, so, so, don't feel slighted.
I'm not slighted.
So, you know.
Communication.
Paul Gazowski, forty-six, Lamprey Lane, I sat through hours of T C V C meetings, uh, maybe I missed something, but this was not vetted by the full committee, and procedurally that, that's inappropriate, let alone that it be vetted before the trustees, before it appears before this board, which has the final decision-making, I, I don't know whether I'm for or opposed to this, I'm just, uh, I'm in favor of fairness, that's for sure, thank you.
Well, just to respond to Mr. Gazowski, it was discussed at the last T C V C meeting, so it was discussed as a thoroughly authorized posted meeting. You and Annie had left.
And that raises another point.
We do not control what the schedule is.
Do what you can.
Okay.
All right. Let's move on. I think we're back to the town administrator for miscellaneous.
Yeah, uh, the only item I have is that we.
I, I have to, Julie, I can. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I thought it was about something.
I've been having some email back and forth with, uh, the superintendent, Morse, for whether we do elections and whether we could hold them at Massway, um, the school board has approved holding, uh, using the Massway School as a polling station for November elections, there isn't one in two thousand nineteen, um, but they would be happy to have us do that because the schools are closed anyway, um, they do not want us to use Massway for March elections, in other words, for the deliberate session, um, because the schools are open on that day, and they feel that they can't isolate Massway School from the voters, and they feel that parking would be a problem, um, they do allow Durham to utilize the high school in March when school is open, um, but they say that they are able to isolate the multipurpose room at the high school, and thus keep voters away from students, and that's why Durham is allowed to use a school when it's open, but they're not gonna let us use Massway, um, so, you know, the board certainly doesn't have to even discuss this tonight, and, you know, we can discuss it at some other time when we get through the budget season, quite frankly, because we're not gonna do anything different in March, or even in November two thousand nineteen, but I don't know, would it be confusing if we had some elections at Massway and some not, and so, I don't know, but, the answer is it's okay to use Massway in November, it is not okay to use it in March.
November of two thousand twenty.
Yes.
Two questions, one, does that come to the primaries in September as well, or not?
I'm gonna say if school is open, then we can't use it.
And also, is there a cost associated with it?
Uh, I didn't ask that specific question, I'm assuming it's the same, we have to pay for their custodians, which is a couple hundred dollars. And, uh, again, I, I believe the police chief, that's what he wants to talk to the board about.
Okay, next, motion to accept the consent agenda.
Seven other times, so, continuing on working on a retention plan, um, a number of months ago, we came up with a shift differential for the officers who work the midnight shifts, um, we are right now two weeks into the field training process of our newest officer, Noah Young, uh, and speaking with other chiefs and other departments on what they do for retention, one of the things that came up was a stipend or an incentive for the person who has to train new people, um, it's a tedious job, it's an important, uh, job to make sure that this officer is trained properly, um, currently Officer Doty, uh, has been through the F T O school, and he has been training Officer Young. Some departments pay more an hour while the officer is being a field training officer, some do it by overtime, and I thought since we do the dollar an hour for the over, for the midnight shift differential, it'd be just as easy to do a dollar an hour while that officer is field training somebody new. Worst-case scenario, if you have a totally green officer and it goes a full eight weeks, you're looking at three hundred and twenty dollars when we do training, um, I'd like to implement that, and I'd also like to retroactive it back two weeks, or the first two weeks that Officer Doty's been in field training.
You feel it's a reasonable request?
Well, I think it's a reasonable request, but I, I would, personally, if somebody is going to be the training officer, to me, they're the training officer all the time, I mean, they need to stay up on what's going on, what the latest and greatest is, et cetera, et cetera, are they, I mean, if they're just gonna train how to do it, uh, the Lee way, but there's other things, like when you do your tactical training with other, with other agencies, when you interface with other agencies, uh, when you change weaponry, et cetera, et cetera, if they're gonna be involved in all that, it seems to me if, if somebody is designated or is trained to be training officer, then they should then get, it should be, it should be reflected in, uh, some kind of a differential, generally when somebody has a specialty, it's reflected in a, in a differential pay in addition to the normal pay.
So, that, that comes into play with our senior patrolman position, in order to, uh, be eligible for senior patrolman position, you have to be here a certain amount of time and possess, either be an F T O or an instructor, so that's where that comes into play, um, being an F T O, all, all of our officers are trained and kept up to date with all law updates, period, so the F T O doesn't get any special training, everybody's at the same level of training, what the F T O does is they help mold how we do it, so, um, you know, they're gonna train them according to state statute on motor vehicle criminal code, our written directives, which are, are across the board, the same for every officer, but it's more making sure of the geography of the town, um, know, um, you know, what our direct patrols are, uh, make sure the officer has good officer safety skills doing motor vehicle stops, write reports the way we need the reports written, so the only time it's an extra task on them is when they're actually training somebody, and after being the only training officer for ten years here, I can tell you it is a tedious, tedious task.
I understand, that's my point, there's a.
Why are you doing it?
A training officer is two occupations, it's the, it's the occupation of, uh, the material that you train, but then it's also the occupation of knowing how to train.
Correct.
So, uh, you know, I just, it's my, in the past, I've always seen that done as, if you are the training officer, you get X amount differential.
We have three field training officers.
However you wanna do it, chief.
Because you have three different personalities, so the officer will get the benefit of seeing how it's done three different ways.
Yeah.
Uh, currently, two of the training officers are senior patrolmen, uh, Officer Doty just lacks the time and service here, uh, to meet that criteria.
Okay.
I take your suggestion as well.
Yeah, fine, thank you.
Wait, I'm sorry, chief, when is it retro turned?
Uh, two weeks, the last two week pay period.
So, December first covers us?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Just trying to make it easy.
Thank you.
Is that miscellaneous?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So, motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Sorry.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion to enter in the non-public session.
I would actually suggest that we save this meeting until we come back out of the non-public, there's a lot to sign.
Oh, there is, okay, so, motion to enter in the non-public session per N H R S A ninety-one hyphen A colon three two, uh, A, per N A, roll call vote required, second to second? Favor, roll call vote, Mr. Bugby, Mr. LaCource, Mr. Brown, we're there. Should we make a motion in that?
Should we just read a motion to come out of the non-public?
No, we need a motion to seal.
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to seal the non-public session minutes, roll call vote required, Selectman, uh, second?
Second.
Second, sorry, all in favor?
Yes.
Selectman Bugby, yes?
Yes.
Selectman LaCource, yes, Selectman Brown, yes?
Thank you.
Yes, 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 oh, we gotta sign.
We've got some signing to do.
Miscellaneous unfinished business, sign.
Big crowd on next, is it Monday?
I'm not sure, could be big crowd, could be not, we invited, um, what did we name? Monday, we invited, uh, community commissions, and we did a dry run, it was a, it was, I don't know, how many people were there?
Thirteen, I think.
Thirteen, and we had three different kinds of cookies, brownies, popcorn, Russian tea.
It sounds like you're trying to buy people on.
Water and cider, it was a party, we had a party, party done.
Popcorn was good.
Yep. But made downstairs, that's where I experienced the hallucinogenic, the light was off, it was turned off, so I says, okay, so I turned it on auto, because that's what it usually is, and I turned it on auto and the lights go boom, but I've experienced it, it's freaky, oh my gosh, so then I figured out if you just turn it on on, it was fine.
Are you stuck at the noise, I find?
Geez, I don't need to sign this until her supervisor and town administrator sign this.
Oh, yeah, they could fill them up once.
I'm not gonna sign it until it's been authorized.
They should've signed it first.
Protocols forward.
Yes, we have to do identified procedures, that's what we have. See you, Ruth. Tomorrow? Oh, you're coming, yeah. Yep.
Need to shelf the shepherd. He's looking used, isn't he?
Yeah, we can't afford to do this.
This guy's shit using him over and over.
We'll have to go to like the Berrytown Town Hall and steal some from them.
But Durham, Durham's got lots of them.
You're gonna meet it to death?
The what?
You're gonna meet it to death?
Meet it to death, yes.
Yes.
To meet it, we have another one tomorrow.
To what, T C V C, yeah, I'm gonna come to it.
Thanks, Drew, something, over the edge.
My sign, Paul.
Mr. Gaddis' thing, yeah.
No, I know.
Can we list, loose something?
These things got bundled.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, oh, one thing, I have a request.
What happened?
I have a request, um, I would like to ask the board's permission if we can purchase a slide advancer with a laser pointer and entrust it to my carrying hands so we can use it for our presentations going forward, because we seem to buy them and they kind of disappear, you don't have a laser pointer?
A pointer and a.
Advancer.
Yes.
Oh, an advancer.
Yeah, because the T C V C's gonna do the presentation, but after the T C V C is done, it could be used for the town stuff, because we buy them and they, we walk about.
Please do it, would make it life easier for everybody.
So, could you get one so we can have one on Monday night?
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, automatically thought, oh, I'm a local man with all, oh, it'll be there by Monday.
Maybe.
You have two days free shipping?
There you go.
You do? Good.
I guess that's just my problem.
Oh, good, excellent, okay, so get a nice one, not one with all the laser bells and whistles, but.
Basic, basic.
If that's a slide back and forth, and it has a laser pointer, that's.
Back, forth, and.
Yep, they're like fourteen bucks or something like that, so, but then, we have to figure out, after we're done with it, where do we keep it?
We put it on a ball or somewhere.
At Town Hall.
I don't know.
They can run it.
Maybe they, maybe it gets attached to the key or something for people that wanna use it or something, I don't know, and they have to turn it back in, what, the keys don't come back either?
Then it wouldn't fit in the key box.
Oh, that's true, never mind, all right.
Must be your copy, I think, one, that's your copy, I don't know, the sixth copy.
I move to adjourn?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.